Let's get started here. We'll, uh, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the July sixteenth meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, I can. Dina Kondo Dimitroki. Brent Todd.
Here.
David Fox.
Here.
Jeffrey Santa Cruz.
Here.
Teresa Rosenberg.
Amanda Savage.
Here.
Matthew Hicks.
I'm here.
And Rich Woodpin.
I'm present, just to be different. All right, uh, first item on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes from the, uh, May twenty-first Planning Board meet, uh, meeting.
June?
With some ju- um, yeah, June.
Yeah, it should be June.
It should be June. Sorry, June eighteenth? June eighteenth minutes, says twenty-first there. We'll ignore that. I should've read my sheet instead, sorry. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to, uh, approve the minutes as submitted?
So moved. Second.
Motion's made a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Agenda overview, quick agenda overview for those of you that are here for item six A, a major subdivision for unassigned address at Elm Street has been, uh, continued to the August twentieth meeting of, uh, at the request of the applicant. Do we need to do anything on that?
Just a motion and a second.
All right, someone like to make a motion to, uh, continue that meeting to the August twentieth meeting? We got a motion?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, uh, design review applications by consent. So, item five in your agenda packet, uh, item five A through five G are design review applications for signs that have been reviewed by board, uh, and, uh, on a consent agenda item. Does any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about five A through five G? If you could, let yourself known. If not.
Five, five I, I think.
Five I?
Yeah.
Really? I only see five G.
I have five H and I.
I think that there were two, if I may, uh, I, I think that there were two, two postings on folks that are reading this in the iPad.
Yes.
And one of them was pu- there, so there was, there are two postings for July.
Two postings for July?
Yeah. One said, one said it was for the longest twentieth meeting, and then like twenty minutes later, we got the second one from you that said for the July meeting.
Yeah.
We all got that.
But I think that the, the.
Really?
Prior.
There's two of them up there, yeah.
The earlier July one is actually, that's why I think the chair is reading his iPad and seeing.
June, yeah, that says the June minutes. Okay, so now it's through, that's through I. Okay, so it's just, it's for the second one down. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's two of them posted.
Right.
Uh, okay, so apologize for that. So I was off. Thank you for keeping me honest, uh, Council Todd. Uh, again, so now we're looking at five A through five I. Uh, if anybody has any questions regarding those, any member of the board want to pull any of those from consent? If not, would someone like to make a motion to review, uh, to approve those, uh, with architectural design review comments as submitted?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We do have, uh, uh, looks like just one of them that was pulled off of the consent agenda. Is that right? Am I still on good terms here?
We have three.
Okay, so con- extensions by consent. So six A was pulled out. So, uh, under seven, we've got, uh, extensions by consent. Do we need to read those into the record, or can we just do them seven A, seven B, and seven C?
You can do them seven A, seven B, seven C.
All right, uh, those are, uh, have been, are those just being extended?
Yep.
So, yeah, so let's just read them in quick. So seven A is, uh, Mark Kitner on behalf of Capella Realty Trust requests a time extension to the July nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty-three conditionally approved major site plan extending conditional approval from July nineteenth, twenty twenty-five to July nineteenth, twenty twenty-six for a sixty-one borough road in the medium dis- medium density district, uh, project. Uh, item seven B is Gallagher Callahan Cartrell on behalf of Onyx Steeple Gate, uh, Concord LLC requests a time extension to a July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four conditionally approved amendment for a major site plan, uh, and seven C, Richard D. Bartlett and Associates on behalf of Thomas and Allison Cooper, uh, requests a time extension to the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four conditionally approved two-lot subdivision extending conditional approval from July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five to July seventeenth, twenty twenty-six for sixty-one mountain road. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those, uh, extensions by consent as so eloquently read into the record?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That's the end of the consent agenda items, so we'll go to, uh, public hearings, design review applications that have been pulled out of consent. Can we, uh, read item eight A into the record?
Yes. Sinorama of Concord on behalf of Home in Hand and Harold E. and Judith A. Ekstrom requests architectural design review for a ten-square-foot non-illuminated freestanding sign to replace an existing freestanding sign and using the existing posts at fifteen Green Street in the Civic Performance District.
Okay, uh, and I think there was an issue with this for, was this illumination?
Um, no, this is the post.
Just the post, okay. Let's, uh, let's have you s- actually, hold Jones for just a second. I'll get a staff update.
Yep, yep, when this went to, um, architectural design review, um, you know, the applicant had kind of informed that, uh, since the time of their application, that, uh, there were some changes done on site. There were some p- changes to the posts. They were a little off-level, and they've since made some changes, and I think she has some revised revisions to show the board.
Okay, let's have you state your name for the record.
I'm Kendra Price from Sinorama.
Great, welcome to the table. Tell us what's going on.
Yeah, so, um, when I had first put in the application, this is what we were working with post-wise. Um, it sounded like to me on my end that they were gonna keep the post, and I was just gonna put the sign in. When we went in to put the temporary banner in, we had discovered, I don't know if the pictures are in here, but the posts were extremely off, um, unbeknownst to me. And, um, I had done the meeting this month, yeah, earlier this month with the posts. I think one was up here, and the other one was down here. Um, they obviously did not like that, and I didn't either. Um, so afterwards, I drove down to the site. This is, this picture was taken about two minutes after that meeting, and they had fixed all the adjustments that they wanted to make.
So it was just from the submission is the reason it got dumped?
Correct.
Okay, any questions about this sign? Brent?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, I think that part of the recommendations were also that, it says here, um, the, uh, site address be included on the frame. Is that?
That was a suggestion.
Okay.
ADR kinda knows, you know, there's fire codes that stipulate where, when addressed, that they like it on signpost. It's readily accessible from the street, but it, Fire Department, you know, there's fire regulations that dictate on the building, on a sign, and all these things. So ADR, when they don't see it, they, it's all for that suggestion, but not a condition of the approval.
Okay, thank you. Because it was on the old one, just fifteen up on the old ones.
Yep.
Maybe a recommendation back to the applicant if they wanna put it up on the so- on the top?
Yeah, we could do that.
Thank you, Council Todd. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Think so, but no?
Oh, oh, actually, I do have a question, sorry. I'm trying to understand the recommendation, because there was talk about whether it needs to be painted or not.
Mm-hmm.
Not real clear what the final recommendation is from ADR.
So, the application, um, as, you know, Kendra kinda showed you, was the existing white, white panel, and it was just changing the panel.
Understood.
At the, during the ADR's public hearing, she, um, you know, she had kind of almost just recently found out that they took that structure down, put up the lumber, and so she had a picture of what was it kind of existing on site. It was kind of some off-level. Um, so ADR, you know, that was all kind of, ADR reviewed the application. It kinda changed during the public hearing. If that helps the timeline a little bit.
Didn't help me answer the question.
Is the intent to pen- paint the?
That's what my question is.
That would be worthy of conversation and any conditions you may want to put. Right now, what you have in front of you is that.
Understood, but there's comments in here from ADR that talks about it needs to be painted or stained to have a more finished look to level and level the post.
Yeah, so the posts have been leveled, so.
Right, but the question doesn't really, it's not clear to me in here.
Certainly worthy of a.
Whether or not the motion, because I don't find what it is. I don't understand the condition of why we would have to paint it.
I believe there is one, there were one or two people in the committee that were fine with it, with this look.
Yes. Are those pressure, pressure-treated posts?
Yeah.
Then painting it, probably not wise anyway.
Yeah, or staining it.
Yeah, you could, the point is, is, we don't have a regulation that says it has to be.
No, we're not gonna do it.
I'm good.
Okay, you good?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, because it was unclear to me.
Okay, any other questions?
Good point.
If not, yeah, there's a good point. Thank you for bringing it up. Um, if not, we'll take a recommendation to approve it as, uh, submitted in the revised plan set that we just took a look at.
I move.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's read item eight B into the records. Vantage signs?
Vantage signs on behalf of Steve Dupree and Pierce Mans requests architectural design review for a new ninety-square-foot sign, non-illuminated freestanding sign. Huh, sign is in there more than once than it should not be. At Tax Map Lot five-eight-three Z eight, uh, unaddressed North State Street at the intersection of Horseshoe Pond Lane and North State Street in the Institutional District.
All right, can we get a staff update on this, if there's anything to be said?
Um, so this sign went before ADR and Planning Board about a year ago. The application expired, so they've brought it back forward. Uh, at the time, Planning Board, I believe, approved it with the condition that it meets MUTCD regulations. Um, when it went back through ADR just this month, they looked at, and they've re- you know, they recommended some other conditions be placed on the sign, um, as outlined in the report, and I think the applicant wants to discuss what were those recommendations were before you directed.
I'll bet he does.
No good deed goes unpunished.
Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
I'm Steve Dupree. I'm a volunteer just trying to help the Pierce Mans get a better sign out at the corner of North State Street. They put out the little sandwich board advertising when they're open. Uh, so it started, first we had to get a license from the city, because it's a city park. We offered to give it to the city, but the city doesn't want to own it. So after we get the license, then we had to procure the insurance, and then we got this approved, and we, uh, were delayed a year just as things happen. Um, and then, when we went back in, uh, ADR came back, came forward with two recommendations, and I won't explain why we don't think they're appropriate. Um, I don't know if the application can show with a picture of the sign, if it's possible.
It's on there.
It's on there. You can see it. Okay, good. I don't need to, um, yeah, I don't know how to, way beyond my pay grade. We'll figure it out. All right. Um, you'll see in the application, there was sort of a, a, sort of a fancy scroll between the, below the main part of the sign. I think the attempt there was to try and tie it into the historical period. ADR recommend we get rid of that, and, uh, I wouldn't have a problem with that at all. Um, the one change, uh, everything we design now, you have to design in mind with the homeless attacking it. So one of the things that the first recommendation was that it be high enough that the seven-foot clearance fit. ADR wanted us to get rid of that fancy scrolling part, which we agree with, but then bring the sign down, get rid of the open or closed, and we don't want to do that. The whole purpose of the sign is to prevent people from driving down the street in a residential neighborhood if it's not open. It's to let people going by, many of whom might not know how distinguished our fourteenth president was, and want to visit the house. So we need an open-close sign, but then we thought, the way it's done there, it's right for people hanging off it and ripping it down. So, uh, we, we love the whole sign, except we'd like to take and put the open-closed, uh, up in the main part of the sign, just like you see underneath the arrow, and have a sliding metal thing. It'll still be too high, we hope, for the homeless to read, but somebody each day, instead of having to go out there and hang a sign that says open or closed, can just take a pointer or a th- you know, a stick and open, slide it open or closed. So basically, we'd move where it says open and the hours up i- into the main part of the sign, and have a sliding, built right into the sign, a sliding metal. Keeps it out of the way of the homeless, less chance it gets ripped down, keeps it high, easy peasy.
So get rid of the scroll?
Get rid of the scroll, get rid of, instead of having to flip open and closed, because it's over seven feet high, somebody go out there with a step ladder every day.
In the middle of the winter, right?
Right. We're just gonna build that right into the bottom of the sign and have a sliding panel that says open or closed. They can walk out there with the yardstick and go that. Just makes it a little bit more handle-proof.
What's the, what's the, um, slider gonna be made of?
Same material that, yeah, oh, yeah. It's gonna match, yeah. It'll either just say open, or there'll be a blank.
Thank you.
It'd be interesting to see how it works in the middle of winter with ice.
Well, they, they aren't open in the middle of the winter.
Oh, okay.
They're only open from about Memorial Day till, about October. Um, this is a donation, about a seven, sixteen thousand-dollar installation. Money's being donated. Pierce Mans is not paying for it.
Okay, other questions?
So how big is that panel? Is it gonna be the same height as the hours and open sign, just one piece raised up under?
You got it.
I, I kinda like the scroll work personally.
I, I like the scroll work, but.
You and ADR go at it.
Yeah, yeah.
We have final say, so if we say it's staying, it's staying. How's that?
I would.
And just for clarity, the, the seven foot is not your reasoning. It's so, somebody on a bike.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Because it's in the sidewalk.
We also like it higher.
No, no, but I'm.
I know, we, we agreed with seven feet. I'd make it eight or nine. It just, wasn't it for, I think this application has it at nine feet. ADR wanted it to only meet the minimum requirement, so they. Right, we like the nine feet. They wanted to drop it down better for better eye level. Higher's better. Everything we design now, we have to think about the homeless. I mean, as the planner knows, I'm going back into the ZBA to see if I can have a twelve-foot fence out behind Harts Alley instead of an eight-foot fence, because we're trying to make it harder to climb over and tag our diner. That's how you have to plan things.
So is your preference the nine foot?
Yep.
Even though ADR is asking for seven?
Yes.
So Steve, would the nine foot be where that looks like that flag is, or whatever that is?
Presidential seal.
The nine feet would be from here down to the ground.
And I may.
I'm just wondering how, how tall it is.
Your nine feet's gonna be up, yeah, yeah. Up higher than what I showed.
No, no, I am. That's what I was trying to figure out where it was.
It'll be the first time there's a presidential seal on your sign.
Amanda?
I think that the, back to the open-close and the height, I think it was all tying in to someone having to get on a step ladder or to do that, which was, was the ask of bringing it down to seven and all this, but I think that your new solution is, is, is better, and I think, if I recall from ADR, that was the reasoning for asking to, to lower it. But if you've solved that, I, I, me personally, I don't, it doesn't, I, I'm okay with it either way.
Make it hard to access, but you don't have to get on a step ladder to open or close.
Perfect.
I was just trying to tie it in for everybody about the height.
Okay, Council Todd?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, well, you know, my only concern is that.
All right. Whoa.
Hey, I like to know my phone rings.
The dance party starts after the meeting, Steve. You gotta wait a minute.
They're older than I am, they still play game.
I was just gonna say that, uh, my only concern is that it's the most attractive sign in the city, and so everything is gonna wanna have to live up to this standard now. It is a very good-looking sign. Um, I guess my question is, with regard to the scrolling, was, was the, do we know if the recommendation to remove the scroll was because of the situation with the height and the other signs, and that, we don't really know.
I have no idea. I wasn't there. Said it was distracting. That's one comment.
It was distracting? Oh, because I didn't read that comment, okay.
I don't think it's distracting.
I don't, I don't.
It's distracting either.
Yeah, no, I don't necessarily think it is, and I.
Committee shouldn't design signs.
No, no. Um, and also, I'd, so I just, I'm also, I don't know if, if some members here had thought of, uh, increasing the height, but I'm not against that either, if that's, um, I, I, I think that maybe it's, it's possible that ADR may have been thinking that you're sitting in your car, obviously, and that's where you're gonna be. You're gonna be driving by this and seeing, and having it a little bit more eye-level, but I think another couple of feet is probably not gonna make that much of a difference, because it, everything's pretty easy to read with the.
Pretty good size, yep.
Yeah.
And the good news is, there is a, there is a sign in the city park a little further back that nobody gets to read. It's one of the state historical signs noting that, you know, Pierce was president, and this was his house down there, but nobody can see it. So the whole purpose, and where the sign goes, it's, it's out there pretty prominently.
Yeah.
I mean, it's where they put the, uh, sandwich board, yeah.
Okay, other comments, questions, concerns? Any member of the audience have any questions, concerns? We'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Great to see you all.
Um, I'd, I'd like, um, feedback or thoughts from staff and from the board on giving them some leeway on the scroll, if it's, if it's the sign, and then the open-close with the hours, and then the scroll work under it. I think, I, I think that's the way, that, I think that's, it, it just breaks it up a little bit.
I would keep it sign, scroll, panel at the bottom, and go to the nine foot to the bottom of the bottom sign.
Okay, yeah.
Because the se- the MUTCD seven foot is a minimum.
Yeah.
Like, not a, that's it. And the whole point is, so bike list.
It breaks it up a little bit, so the open will stand out a little bit more, I think.
Well, the other thing about putting it up at nine, cars, two or three cars back.
Will be able to see it.
Actually have a better chance to see it, kinda like we put street name signs up high, so you see them from a further distance.
We're designing a sign with committee again, so I, yes.
Problem is, by putting the open and the hours in the main part of the sign above the scroll, you don't have the post in the middle.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's true. And then you get the slide across. Okay, okay.
I asked you, well, that's what I asked, and I thought you.
Yeah, no, it would be up in the top of that. No, it was too separate. Now it's gonna be one up underneath the body. All right, so let's prove it that way. Um, is that okay?
And leaving it the way ADR wanted without the scrolling?
It, it, what's the, what's the, what's the, uh?
I'd go with that. I think it's cleaner. I just think it's.
I do, too.
I think it's much cleaner without, and just, and, and I like it, because I like the fact that we're highlighting, you know, the Pierce man, so.
Okay, that sounds like a motion to approve it as submitted without the scrolling with the embedded open-close up in the top part of the sign with the hours.
And the height can be whatever.
Okay, Jeff?
I guess my only question has kinda directed the applicant, so I apologize, but if the panel is part of the upper sign, if you ever change the hours, you gotta replace the entire sign. So is there any consideration of having it be almost like a bolt-on somehow?
Yes.
I would recommend that. That way, if, one, the open-close panel ever breaks, or if you change the hours, you don't have to take down the entire sign. You just unbolt that piece, bolt it back on.
We're real good at that.
All right, good call.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Have we eliminated the scrolling or not?
Eliminated the scrolling, yes.
That's the recommendation.
That's the recommendation. I believe Teresa's got a motion, right?
Can I propose that we keep the scrolling?
I'll make that motion, that we approve the sign as submitted without the scrolling, with an embedded, the open-close recommendation that it's bolt-on, so it can be moved and changed as needed. Height at nine feet.
Yeah, nine feet.
Yep, good. Okay, that's my motion.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Yep?
Just real quick at a staff level is, we'll probably wanna see a redesign. It's possible, this could change the, um, area of the sign.
Okay.
Which.
Yep.
Will need to be reviewed by staff.
Okay, Steve? Yep. Okay, thank you, Alec, for that note with the redesign submitted for review by staff. It doesn't need to come back, though, right?
Unless it falls out of.
Unless it falls out of.
Not as long as they're meeting exactly what your motion is indicating.
And it's size-wise, it's.
Clear with what, what we get here.
Okay. Are you clear with what we?
I'm not, but. I, I know we have the decorative scrolling is, is removed.
Yep.
Nine foot.
Nine foot height and the.
Nine foot height to what?
Bottom of the lowest sign, or part of the sign. So if there's that bottom panels, the open-close and the hours, that's the bottom of the low.
Bottom of the low sign shall be nine feet.
Shall be nine feet.
From the ground?
Yep.
And then, uh, the language pertaining to the sliding operating panel and the open and closed and hours of, hours of operation.
Be the same height and total width, right?
Right, it'll be embedded in the.
Embedded in the overall side panel.
Embedded in the overall side panel, yep. We don't need to get into the details of.
How it slides.
How it slides, or is it a, is it an LED sign that scrolls like the Christ the King Church and all that?
Alec, probably gonna get a little wider, because you're taking a little more square footage, because you're taking out the piece. The post is not gonna be a gap anymore. It'll be solid through there. That's, so you'll have that little extra square footage, whatever that is.
But we specifically want open, closed, and hour of operation moved into the overall sign panel.
Below the arrow.
Yep.
Below the arrow.
If the hours can go on the sliding part.
Okay, I'm gonna move on. So we got a motion, second. No further discussion. Staff's good? Good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Now you can leave. You could stay for the rest if you want. All right, let's, uh, read item eight C into the record if we could.
Wait, under that. Green Bear Signs on behalf of the Sopery Off-Maine and Hedges Property Holdings LLC requests architectural design review for a thirty-one-square-foot sign, internally illuminated building wall sign to replace an existing building wall sign, and a twenty-square-foot projecting sign to replace an existing projecting sign at thirty-two North Main Street in the Central Business Performance District.
Okay, um, what do we got for staff on this?
So this application went before ADR. The applicant had indicated that both signs would be internally illuminated, um, which, so ADR recommended, uh, an approval for an opaque background to meet both design guidelines, but also for our zoning ordinance. The sign needs to have a dark. So this application went before ADR. The applicant had indicated that both signs would be internally illuminated, um, which, so ADR recommended, uh, an approval for an opaque background to meet both design guidelines but also for our zoning ordinance. The sign needs to have a darker background than the font or an opaque background if it's internally illuminated. The applicant since stated that they do not plan to internally illuminate these signs. So we thought it was important to pull this because, um, it had been rec, approved with consent, they would've had to put the opaque background regardless. So, um, I have, I'm recommending to revise ADR's recommendation to approve the application as, as submitted with the condition that an opaque background shall be provided on any sign which becomes internally illuminated.
Okay, so right out of the gate, it won't be opaque, but if they determine later on they're gonna illuminate it, then it has to be opaque.
Does that clarify if they decide to externally illuminate it in any way?
Only internally illuminated. Externally.
They have to come back before this. I just don't wanna see this where suddenly we go out there three months from now and, oh, suddenly there's light shining up.
No, it's not, that's not part of the.
I know it's not part of the app, but I wanna make it clear to the applicant.
That's not, that's not a requirement. If they externally illuminate, it doesn't have to be opaque. Is that correct?
No, no, but I'm.
That's correct, unless you want to.
What I'm saying, I guess, is it's not about the opaque. My concern is they've chosen not to light it internally. I wanna make it clear to the applicant that that doesn't mean they can just externally illuminate it without coming back to us, is where I'm concerned.
I don't know that that's our, I, 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 I guess we could do that, but I don't know.
Or somebody. They have to get a permit, something. I just, their decision to not illuminate at all, I'm concerned, is suddenly gonna show up in two months. You're gonna walk by there and there's gonna be some lights that have just been put up and have not been.
What's the requirement on lighting? Can we stipulate lighting if they, it's not part of the, the application that, that they don't, they don't, all of a sudden internally illuminated or externally illuminated?
Potentially. I mean, you would, you know, typically, you know, they state one thing and they have to construct per what they stated. As a, you know, to satisfy, you could state that, approve the application with the condition that the signs are non-illuminated, and if they become internally illuminated, an opaque background. I mean, it doesn't quite express, it doesn't indicate one way to external, but you're stating that these are non-illuminated signs. If they were to become internally illuminated, do this.
Yeah, so saying they're not illuminated means that restricts them from putting lights on them externally.
Restricts all these people putting up signs without applications.
Yeah, yeah, same way.
You know, how you wanna construct your motions is up to you. That might be one way to recommend it.
Does that, is that logical for you?
I, I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and mince words. I don't agree with it. I think we may make it clear to applicants that if you decide you wanna externally illuminate because you've chosen not to internally, because you don't wanna go opaque, that you have to get a permit to do the external. You can't just put it up because you made a change.
Just for the record, the applicant's not here, right? No? Okay, so.
That's all I'm gonna say.
I'll let you make that motion, if you'd like to make that motion.
And that, if the sign, if, you know, if, sorry to have interrupted, keep, keep what we had before. Approve it with an opaque background if any sign ever becomes internally illuminated, and then if the applicant wishes to have it externally illuminated, they need to submit a new application.
They need to. Correct. That's fine.
Okay.
That I'm okay. I just wanna make sure it's very clear to these applicants that, because I can see it now.
Yeah, so I'm gonna squirrel around it. Dina?
This question probably would've been for the applicant, but they're not here. I just wanted to make sure that they wanted it to say off-main instead of on-main, because it's on-main, not.
I was wondering the same thing.
I don't know if that's.
I'm gonna trust that it is, but I have a feel, I do not know if this business previously existed somewhere else, and so keeping the name, that's my best guess.
It says off.
It says off.
And the application says off.
Many times, no, I mean, I've walked by.
In the building?
It's open now.
Been in the, it's open.
Yeah.
And, and their sign actually says off.
Okay, so you wanna make that motion?
Yes.
The floor is yours.
As described.
As described. Do we have a second on that? I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, Alec, for your help on that.
Yes, thank you.
All right, brings us to, uh, the next section in our agenda, which is section nine, site plan subdivisions, conditional use permits and amendment applications. The exciting part of our agenda this evening. If we could read item nine A into the record.
Zachary Laterno on behalf of McCarthy Family Trust of two thousand and twenty-one, requests approval for a minor subdivision application and certain waivers from the subdivision regulations for a two-lot subdivision at Tax Map Lot ninety-two Z four, addressed as two-two-seven Garbans Falls Road in the medium-density residential and open space residential districts.
All right, let's get a staff update on this if we could.
Staff update for this one is, uh, it, it's just a basic two-lot subdivision. Um, the, the existing lot has a house on it right now, so it's developed. They wanna split off a small portion, uh, for, to then sell and build a new house. Um, we've worked back and forth to have a complete application and have everything addressed with the waivers. So with approval of waivers, um, everything is complete, and I was gonna say one other thing. Oh, and they, they received their variance from the zoning board of adjustment for, uh, the dimensional standards that were needed to approve this lot.
Okay, so there is a determination of completeness component to this. Uh, staff has determined the application is complete, not a development of regional impact, and set the public hearing for this evening. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and not a development of regional impact?
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. The public hearing is open. Welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. I'm Zachary Laterno. I'm a realtor and I run a land management and land use consultant for One Man Shop. This is.
I'm Kevin McCarthy. I'm the property owner.
Okay, well, welcome to the table. If you'd just give us a quick update on this, it looks pretty straightforward.
Absolutely. First off, before we get started, uh, just wanna make sure you all know that Anne Marie and her team, Alec, have been incredibly helpful throughout this entire process, bending over backwards to make sure that the entire thing went smoothly. We had a couple little roadblocks here in the last thirty days, but it wasn't anything that we couldn't overcome. Just making sure that the surveyor was up to date.
Great to hear. Those guys are great, aren't they?
They are. They are, absolutely. The, the surveyor does apologize that he can't join us tonight, but I'm here to present instead, so. Um, this is pretty cut and dry, just like we mentioned the zoning board a couple months ago when we came back to get the variance for, uh, lot dimensions. Um, realistically, uh, Mr. McCarthy does not intend on building any more in that, in that lot. Uh, we'd like to, Mr. McCarthy would like to sell it off individually. Um, so with that being said, you know, as far as, uh, stormwater controls or driveway locations, things of that nature, and even the setbacks in and of itself, we're leaving that up to the total control of whoever might purchase the lot and decide to do a, a custom home build. There, we're not putting in, or, or even selling it or marketing it as some sort of a complex of any kind. It should be a single-family dwelling, and you'll notice that the plans reflect as such as with the, uh, the septic location, wellhead and things of that nature, too. So if anybody has any questions, we're more than happy to.
Okay.
Find answers.
Questions? Remember, the audience have any questions or concerns? No? Okay, I'm gonna leave the public hearing open for just a sec. Um, I don't think I had anything. I'm just, I had my notes on the other version of the agenda. Um, and I don't wanna go back to it. Thought I had made a note. Waivers are good, staff? No, no issues with the waivers?
Yes, yep, the waivers are good.
Okay. All right, nothing from, nothing from the board. Thank you very much. We'll close the public hearing. Um, so in our, using findings of fact as the information we heard here tonight, the information that's in your packet, although it's not in section eight where it always is, where is it?
Nine. Nine is the.
No, recommendations, here we go. Staff recommends, okay, so findings of fact. So first up on the agenda is nine point two to grant the waiver request below, uh, from the listed sections of the subdivision regulations based on the evidence provided and showing the criteria RSA six seventy-four, thirty-six, two N, and section thirty-five oh eight, uh, of the subdivision regulations are met, and those are outlined in, uh, the A, B, and C waiver, A, B, C, D waivers that are requested there. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waiver requests as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Nine point three is to grant the minor subdivision approval for the two-lot subdivision of two-two-seven Garbans Falls Road, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions, A, uh, uh, one A and B, two through eight, and subsequent conditions, one through nine. Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor subdivision approval for the, uh, two-lot subdivision as outlined?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You are all set.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, good luck. All right, moving right along. Let's go to item nine B. If we could read nine B into the record.
Keach, Keach Nordstrom Associates, Inc., on behalf of Parmenter Place, requests approval for major site plan, architectural design review, and certain waivers from the site plan regulations to add eight additional attached dwelling units to the existing development, addressed as fifteen Parmenter Road in the neighborhood residential district.
All right, let's get a staff update on this if we could.
Okay, uh, once again, the applicant has, um, worked back and forth with staff, um, very diligently, and we now have a complete application with, uh, the, the waivers that have been requested. Staff has reviewed the waivers, um, those that we're comfortable with, we're recommending approval. There's two that we're not, um, but that's certainly planning board's discretion to go along with staff or not. Uh, there are twenty-five existing attached dwelling units on the site right now. They wanna add an additional eight. Um, we did, we did an analysis of the zoning ordinance for attached dwelling developments, and it complies completely with all the zoning ordinance requirements. Uh, with the conditions of approval and the waivers, it, it will comply with all of the site plan regulations.
Okay, uh, so this does have a determination completeness component. We've got a, um, grant waiver, section six oh-three-two-C and eleven oh-five, um, and that is for the meeting, is that right?
Yeah, it's for determination completeness and public hearing all in one meeting.
On one shot. Um, so those, the waiver request as well as determining the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and setting the public hearing for tonight. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and set the public hearing, put in the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. The public hearing is open. Welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record. Jim, this is for, uh, Parmenter Place, not Christ the King, Christ the King, okay? I just wanted to make sure. I ran into Jim yesterday. I ran into Jim yesterday. He told me he was here for the Christ the King, and I said, it's not on the agenda, Jim. What are you talking about? I got you.
All right.
All right, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record.
Thank you very much. My name is Matt Peterson with Keach Nordstrom Associates. I'm, tonight I'm with.
I'm Julie Palmieri with Concord Housing and Redevelopment.
Great, welcome to the table.
Thank you very much. We're here tonight for the expansion of our project that was built a few years back here for, as a outline there, for the expansion of eight units. Uh, currently on site right now, uh, there are twenty-five units and a mix of different type of units that are out there. Uh, there's a two-plex, eight-plexes, six-plexes and that type of stuff that's out there currently. Um, you will notice that we asked for, I would say, a bunch of waivers. We don't typically do that, but in this case here, where there's so much of this is existing, a lot of those waivers are related to the existing buildings, existing stuff on site and stuff like that. So it's not like we came in here and didn't put a plan set that has the information for the eight units. It's just that there's a lot of existing stuff out there. Uh, we did go out here and resurvey all this this, uh, winter here, February, March. We did the survey to pick up all the buildings and stuff like that. My office had actually done the site plans back in the day, but we didn't have, we didn't do an as-built, so we had to go back and pick up the as-built and stuff like that. Um, obviously, existing is planned, pretty straightforward. Demo planned in the back here. We're just gonna be taking out the trees. If any of you looked at the Google Earth maps or anything on the site there, you'll notice that our site is cleared all around our property lines. Um, so we're the only one that's treed there, so we are taking out some trees on the back of our property to put in the eight units on the back. What we'd like to do is, there's, uh, eight units currently right now at the end of the street. We'd like to bring a loop road around the back of it there to add in the eight units behind those that are there. Um, as you know, if you went out there, that slope kinda goes up a little bit. I think that's probably why at the time we didn't put it there. Uh, fifteen years later, things have changed a little bit. This is actually a nice piece of land to develop right now compared to some of the stuff that we see out there. Um, so it seemed to make a lot of sense putting these units back to back, uh, as we went out there. Made the nice loop road. The site plan here just goes through and shows you the parking spaces we're proposing, snow storage areas that we're proposing along the sides of the roads, where some of the drainage features will be on the site, on the grading and drainage plan. Um, and there's a retaining wall in the back here because of the grade changes we go up. Uh, one of the things, obviously, these are affordable housing units. Uh, we do not put in basements to do walkouts and stuff like that, which would help with a wall and stuff like that, but to try and keep the building costs down, we do not have basements in these units here. So again, I think we've all seen over the last couple of years, the cost of construction has just been crazy. So keeping our units tight and making them affordable that we can still build them and, and rent them out is what was our main drive in developing the project. The grading drainage, grading plan here is kind of the most things we spend most time on. Uh, we do have a slope, as I said, in the back here that goes up. We have that riprap stabilized. We have an underground detention system for drainage. Uh, there are some other facilities on site, underground drainage system in the middle of a couple of the units. There is a detention pond at the very end of the project. Uh, we felt it didn't make sense to try to tie into those with a new development here. This is separate drainage. It does eventually all tie in and make its way down the hill to the ponds that are there, but we've made sure that all our pre and post numbers meet before we go into that system there, so that we've take, take any of the extra flow and run off into our system that's underneath the parking lot that's there. Site will be serviced by sewer and water, um, and utilities. Utility sheet is pretty straightforward. Uh, we'll have a gas line and water line coming into one building. We have the mechanical room on that side there, and again, we have a sewer and we have underground electric coming in on the other side of the building. Erosion control plans, we put in the plan sets now. I think we all know about fifteen to twenty years ago. This is to make sure the contractors have an idea of what they're doing during construction. Uh, makes a cleaner runoff, stuff like that. These have become obviously a big part of all of our plan sets nowadays. One of the waiver requests we had asked for was a stamped architectural, uh, landscape architect stamp. Um, our office uses train out of Hopkinton for most of our designs, but this was pretty minor, adding on the eight units. We felt that with the existing vegetation out there, again, we did these plans back in the day, so we were able to put some of the similar trees and vegetation out there. We felt that the waiver request was reasonable in this, uh, incident. Lighting plan is gonna go with some carriage types lanterns around the site. Again, I think we've done a good job the last twenty years of not, um, sending all our light up into the skies. These will all be the downcast, dark sky type light fixtures that we propose on almost everything nowadays. Um, I think we see a lot more in the sky these days than we have in the recent. And then we have, obviously, our details for the, uh, drainage, our sewer, and then our construction details. As for the architectural plans, we've tried to keep them as identical as we can to what's out there, but after fifteen years or so, um, things change a little bit on getting the exact type of siding color and stuff like that, but we've done our best effort to make these, that you won't notice the difference between what's out there now and what we're putting in here. So again, two-story units, uh, we have four three-bedroom units, we have four two-bedroom units, um, pretty straightforward rental unit, again, trying to get some more stock into the city. Um, I think this is a lot better than the garden-style stuff that we're seeing everywhere going up. So again, I wish we had probably more of these, but the site just doesn't have the ability for more of those that are there. I think that's about my presentation. I, I think you guys have a pretty detailed letter from staff that I think was very well done, and, um, we agree with what's there. The two waivers that they went against, um, was that, uh, we would show the utilities. We have no problem with that, and then to add a sidewalk down the, from the back here down to the other property that's there. Um, we don't have a problem with that either. Thank you very much.
Okay, a couple of questions. So, um, even though the existing building, uh, existing eight building is in your loop, your loop space, so you've got two ADR, uh, AD, uh, excuse me, uh, handicap accessible spots shown, or four spaces shown. Do you have any in the other part of the development? I don't think so. How, how old is this development?
Oh, we would definitely would. I, I just, yeah, twenty-ten is when this was done.
Okay, so you definitely got some somewhere.
Yeah, we just didn't pick up that striping. I'm sorry. We, we could shoot.
No, that's fine. I, I just wanted to make sure we weren't just putting the only, the only spaces there.
No, no, no. No, actually, there are, yep, they're up at the front here. There's a couple there. Um, there's a couple across the street. Do you, can you see?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can see them now. Okay, they're just not delineated quite as much as the other ones. Okay.
We only blew up where we were.
Yeah, yeah, no, I got it. Um, landscape buffer incursion on the, um, looks like the dumpster pad that's there. Is there any opportunity to put the dumpster pad down in the other corner or away from the landscape piece? I'm just, I, there's nothing on the other side of you, right? There's, that's all open, it's air and ocean, I think, on the other side.
It's open, yeah, open land on both sides of us. That's. It's open, yeah, open land on both sides of us, that's...
Any issues with the landscape buffer incursion on the top part?
No, in fact, they have to put a landscape buffer around the dumpster.
Right.
Yeah, they're, they're, so some of the landscaping that they're showing around the dumpster, they, they have to...
Right, I'm just worried, I'm just looking at the line that goes through here. They're way over the, the buffer line, but...
Oh, uh, yeah, there's no problem with that unless...
I mean, it's fifty-foot buffer. No. Um, okay, questions from the board?
Just, when I drove out there, I noticed a slope. So if I'm understanding correctly, the retaining wall is going between the existing building and the new building.
So there's a couple retaining walls. So there's one retaining wall here that's going between the two buildings, and then we have a second one up here on the slope, just in this corner here, around the corner.
That makes sense. Thank you.
It's a significant slope.
Yeah, it is.
Jeff?
So my question is, that back slope you said was all riprap. What is that? It looks like, when I scaled it, it's a four to one.
It's a two to one.
Okay. I just, I hate showing that much riprap because it really impacts the heat island in an urban, more urban-type area. But a two to one, I don't think you're gonna successfully get grass and be able to maintain it. The other thing is, is I didn't see it in the packet. Maybe staff saw it. Truck turn showing that the fire truck can make it all the way around the entire facility.
We, we did do truck turning movements around there. I'm not sure if we gave a copy of that to you or not, but I mean, we'd definitely be willing to submit that to you. That does, that was one of the reasons I did the loop road from fire and stuff like that. Everybody's asked if we dead-ended it or basically put, you know, a hammerhead in this location here for fire checks, and I'm like, well, I've only got this short distance to finish, and it makes a nice loop for the units that are there, so, yes. We've definitely made sure they can get around there.
You know what, Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I had is you indicated that you've put a sidewalk all the way around, but the sidewalk should connect the upper to the lower. So you may have to come across to that upper median, uh, landscape island for the existing driveway.
I think we'd either go this way and up and connect, or we could come this way around and connect.
But is there no connection from the existing eight unit back to the remainder of the site, so that you can get all the way to the street?
Uh, I mean, there's, hold on, let's go back to the existing.
Because when I drove up there...
So currently, right now, the sidewalk on this side goes all the way down in front of the units, and that comes all the way to this point right here.
Right, which crosses, then it goes all the way down to the street.
Yep.
What I'm saying is where it ends today...
Right here.
Are you somehow showing that you can connect, so the people then can get all the way to the back? See, what I'm saying is today it looks like it ends at that parking...
Yep.
And doesn't connect to the eight unit. Is there something to get you across that?
Yeah, what we would do is just put a crosswalk right here and put a little piece right there. Yeah.
That's fine. That's all, that'd be great. That's all I'm asking. Just something so that...
Makes it a continuous, so nobody's getting off and they know where to go. Yep, I understand.
Appreciate you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
You okay from the board perspective of landscaping, letting them do the landscaping and not have a landscape architect sign? Okay. Dina?
I'm amazed.
Just pull up a little bit. We can't hear you.
Sorry. Uh, and it's all traditional, um, gas and, and heating. Um, any solar or anything like that in your design?
We have not proposed any of that on this site here. Um, we're the location, that slope kinda going up, and actually, we're the only ones with the trees there. We kinda block, those trees kinda block what these roofs are gonna sit.
Gotcha.
Keep asking the question, though.
Yes, absolutely.
Keep asking.
We wanna see more in the city.
Okay, other questions from the board?
I would like to state that I'm not worried about your colors matching exactly. I'm okay with them being a little different. I think them looking all the same sometimes is distracting.
I agree. I agree with that. I was wondering if there was a way to break up the, the bottom and the top colors.
I was almost thinking that, too. If you went with a slightly different color, you'd get my approval in heart, because it's not like pink or something crazy. You know, but if it was a little different tan or gray compared to what was there, I wouldn't have an issue.
I think that's a good idea, actually, because if it's not gonna match exactly, I think it might look strange.
So if you do it a little different, yeah, especially with the slope difference and the little newer construction, I would be okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Trusting that, you know, obviously, staff looks at the final and makes sure there's no issue, but...
I'm pink.
I'm surrounded by pink.
That'd be terrible.
Depends on the pink.
Jeff doesn't like pink, for the record.
Thanks.
It depends on the pink.
He's around it.
Okay, other questions, concerns? Anything from staff? Remember, the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? All those hundreds of people out there? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony. Um, so in your packet of info here, we will use, again, as our findings of fact, the information that's been submitted as part of our, uh, as part of our submission process and, uh, been compiled by staff, the testimony that we heard here tonight and the plan sets that we saw. Um, so we have, uh, Item Nine point two in our packets to grant the waiver requests below. And I'm not gonna read them into the record, but the, uh, the waiver requests are outlined in, uh, A through M in your packet. Would someone like to make a motion to grant waiver requests as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Nine point three is to deny waiver requests below from the listed sections of the site plan regulations because neither criteria, um, outlined in the packet were met, which is, uh, Item A and B, Section Fifteen oh three, ten, municipal utilities, and Section Twenty-one oh one, twenty-one oh, twenty-one point zero one, twenty-one point zero three, and twenty-one point zero four, to waive the requirement to put sidewalks on the site and off-site whenever possible. That's squared away with...
All those they've agreed to, right, to show the utilities?
Yep.
And to put the sidewalks in, so do we still need those waivers?
So they don't need a waiver request for either of those, right?
And ready to make sure I'm...
Yeah, no, is that right?
They've agreed to show all the utilities. He indicated they would agree to show all the utilities on the site.
So no waiver there?
And they agreed to do the sidewalks, so do we need to...
Those are the two that staff did not want to recommend.
Yeah, but, yeah, go ahead and deny him.
So we can go ahead and deny him and then...
All right, I just wanna make sure we were doing the right thing.
So, uh, would someone like to make a motion to deny the waiver request as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point four is to grant, uh, site plan approval for the construction of eight new attached dwelling units and associated site improvements at Fifteen Param- Param- Parmenter Road as submitted, and subject to the following, um, and those are outlined in precedent conditions, A, one, A, one A, I through, one through seven, not I, sorry, one through seven, bless you.
Eight.
Eight, sorry. V three, geez, can't read that. Um, and then B, I could put ones and twos in there next time. Um, B, C, D, one and two, E, one, two, and three, F through, ugh, through K, it's broken, and then F.
It's okay. You got this.
And then two and three, okay. Oh, my gosh.
You got this.
Uh, all right, would someone like to make a motion to, no, sorry, then subsequent conditions are outlined in, uh, one through ten. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the site plan approval as outlined so eloquently by the chair?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You are all set. Thank you. Good luck.
One other thing that I forgot to include, oh, you guys are fine. We, we just need another motion to, um, uh, grant architectural design review approval...
Oh.
Based on the recommendation from the architectural design review committee to construct as submitted.
Someone like, make, make a motion. We got a second?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so that's in the record.
Thank you.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our public hearing seconds. Uh, any other business which may legally come before the board tonight, before eight o'clock? Note the dates, note the times.
Chairman, if I could just say, two applicants tonight complimented staff, and I just wanna echo that. I, I really appreciate these reports being so thorough. It feels like when we get to meetings now, they go so much more smoothly than they used to before the, the change of the reports, so...
Other than the, the problems of me reading them into the record, which is on me, not...
That's not on them.
I can't read the Roman numerals as opposed to regular... That's exactly right. You get what you pay for, and I'll echo that as well.
I'd like to as well, because I think staff is doing a really thorough job. If, if any of you remember when I first got here, my questions were a lot longer and a lot more in-depth.
Right.
And I think staff, Peter, you guys have all really, I was actually happy to see in one of the conditions tonight about the Ashtoe site distance being in there.
There you go.
Yes. So, that will be a continuation, so now, you know, my biggest thing is hopefully they look at it before they subdivide, because it'd be a real bummer if they couldn't do it once they get outside.
That's right.
But thank you very much.
All right, uh, so if there's nothing else, we will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Whoops, wait a minute. I know, that's good. Motion's been made and seconded, and all those in favor, aye, and we are adjourned.